The whole business, twenty eighteen local water supply plan. All we have.
Um, I presented this to you guys last month, did everybody get a chance to look at it?
Ma'am.
Presented it last month, did everybody get a chance to look at it? Okay, we just need to adopt the local water plan and the resolution.
That's a resolution, I'd like to read. Twenty eighteen local water supply plan. Whereas North Carolina general statutes one forty-three days three fifty-five one requires that each unit of local government that provides public water service, will plans to provide public water services and each large community water system shall either individually or together with other units of local government and large community water systems prepare and submit their local water supply plan. And whereas as required by statute and in the interest of sound local planning, a local water supply plan for Ramser has been developed and submitted to the board commissioners for approval. And whereas the town Ramser board commission finds that the local water supply plan is in accordance with the provisions of North Carolina general statute one forty-three days three fifty-five one and that it will provide appropriate guidance for future management of water supplies for Ramser and will as useful information to fault environmental quality for the development of a state water supply plan as required by statute. Now therefore be resolved by the board commissioners Ramser that the local water supply plan dated twenty eighteen is hereby approved and shall be submitted to the department of environmental quality division of water resources and be further resolved that the board commissioners intends that this plan should be revised to reflect changes in relevant data and projections to at least every five years or as otherwise requested by the department in accordance with the statute and sound planning practice. I would entertain a motion to adopt it first.
I still move if we adopt the motion for the twenty eighteen local water supply plan.
Excellent. Moving second, any discussion?
Done.
If no discussion, I'll favor the motion, raise your hand. All opposed, I'd like to make a carry. Any other whole business or comments? If not, we'll move on to another new business. Mr. Ben Johnson, would you come up here please? I'm gonna put you on the spot. I know this young gentleman from, uh, he's right off middle school, he's now enrolled in, right off early college. Uh, he'll be a junior coming year. And he's asked me to give him permission to maybe work for municipal government sometime this summer, learn a little bit about how we operate. And I told him, I said, well, I can get before the board and see what their thoughts are, but, uh, he's fifteen. Very smart individual. I appreciate his willingness to serve with us and, uh, Ben, you have anything you'd like to add?
Uh, great for your time and consideration, about it.
Okay. He's a guy that's straight to the point. He's a good young man. Very smart for a while, uh, to his mom, he's a principal in there, so, uh, he's probably a good kid. Well, I would ask the board to give him permission to work some of this town hall this summer and anything else we might need to do. It won't be every day, but, uh, he and I will get together before they don't want they want to work. And then I'll be in the office and maybe some out on the street. Whatever we wanted to do, you're willing to do.
So, you know, I've, um, come and work and mentor him this summer, um.
Second motion. Any discussion?
I'll have to ask you, the mayor, and let him check that, that he's sure they're okay.
He probably needs working to see that.
Back in the old room, you can work with sixty-sixteen.
Now, he's not gonna be rich.
I understand, he's gonna be at, he's out on the side.
We can do that. Is that what you'd like to ask the commission?
Ben, uh, the decision is that we need to check with our league and make sure it's permissible for us to work you.
Yeah, it's okay if you back and move him.
The motion on the floor that, uh, that Ben, Ben, I would just summer for approval from the locality.
Any further discussion?
Commander, you're supervision under.
A little bit of that, right? He won't be doing any paperwork. Like the body. He might look process, but he won't be doing any actual paperwork for the town. He just wants to learn what we do. Have something coming, I guess.
We've got a whole bunch of stuff you can do.
We've got a lake up here that needs a lot of, uh, work done on it, like being.
Yeah, we've got some other lots that you can do stuff and, I swear, Bobby can pump some shredding and.
Any further discussion?
If not, uh, all in favor of, uh, letting Mr. Ben Johnson, you know, read us some time, raise your hand. That's per conditions, all opposed likewise. Then, uh, we will be shifting to the room tomorrow and let you know the resources, uh, that what they're coordinating. Be like a hand to them. That's exact, but you tell them that, uh, high school, uh, and more term shift. If they don't want to work with the town, you work with them.
Okay, thank you, Ben. We'll make some phone calls tomorrow, see what we can find out. Okay? Thank you for your answer. Okay, next item of business is our plans on the nothing, your word.
Okay, the first thing I'd like to raise your board tonight is we have received a petition requesting an injunction. And I would like to ask the board, this, this property is located on the corner of Jordan Road and Reed Creek. It is one twenty-two Reed Creek Road. Currently, the property is serviced by water and sewer. And they have come and asked, the property is approximately, has a value of approximately four hundred thousand dollars is what the tax revenue show, tax records show on the property, and they are asking to come into the city. So, at this time, I would like to ask this board, if you would charge the attorney and the clerk with verification and to certify the application and the information that you provided. And if you will open your little books, there that first, the first thing there is the application, the map, and a deed of the property. And I would like for them to certify that the information is accurate and, um, be able to place this, um, next month for possible injunction.
Of course, we'll give what's called a letter of sufficiency through the board, state investment, the application, here.
I'd like to make a motion. We, uh, have our attorney and.
That's okay.
Look at this.
Second.
Second.
Moving to second, any discussion? If no discussion, all in favor of the motion, raise your hand. All opposed likewise, make a carry.
In that summary, before you deny the proposed zoning ordinance amendments that the planning board has been working on. The proposed amendments have been developed by the planning board for board consideration approved. Parking requirements in residential zoning districts and also a new special use permit for what would be called a home business. Currently, to understand parking regulations for residential properties in Ramser, you must refer to the following articles and sections of the zoning ordinance. You go to article eleven, section two, off-street parking standards. It requires that the spaces be a minimum of nine by eighteen. And for a dwelling, for dwellings, single-family, two-family, and family and multifamily, requires two spaces for dwelling. Then you go to article eleven, section six, improvement design and location standard. And it explains that all off-street parking, including exits, entrances, and maneuvering in parking areas shall be graded and permanently maintained by property owners. And they shall have access to a dedicated storage. The next thing you have to go to is you need to go to article three definitions and look up what the definition of a yard is. A yard is any open space on the same lot with a building and unoccupied from the ground upward except by trees, shrubbery, or fences. So, when you take all that together, it explains that you have to be within a parking, uh, designated parking area to be able to park your vehicle. Currently, um, the ordinance also does not permit storage of commercial vehicles within areas, residential areas, except by special use permit. The planning board felt the following needed to be addressed. One, that some people drive work vehicles to and from their place of business or employment. They felt in circumstance, that in some circumstances, this is reasonable and should be allowed. Two, recreational vehicle parking is not specifically addressed, only that yard areas are not permitted to be used for parking areas. Three, because Ramser doesn't have hotels or RV parks, some people occasionally use RVs at their residence when they have family coming in for holidays or special occasions. The fourth thing that they felt needed to be considered was there having violations of RVs being used for permanent living purposes and violations of commercial vehicle storage on residential properties. These are the things that Ramser has been experiencing and for that reason, those, those specifics, that's what the, the planning board has recommended that the board approve the amendments provided in the notebook. If you look behind cap number two, those are the recommended amendments. Now, I brought these before you, uh, and given you updates of, of what the board was working on and where they were each month. But this is the final draft for what amendments they would like this board to consider. So, what I'd like you to do is be able to take this with you and review it. Now, the board can tonight establish a meeting time for a public hearing or the board is able. You tell me where you want to go with this.
Is there any way we could possibly put this on hold until next month?
I think we'd like to have a public hearing to find out with the public and then maybe we could address it next month.
Yeah, but I was thinking, maybe instead of making all these amendments, we could just go through and just create a whole million, um, chapter with the thing. All these amendments you bring into us, I think it was in a whole, it was in a.
Why, it's only the book.
Yeah.
Bring it up to date.
Yes.
They weren't supposed to.
Absolutely.
That's what I would like.
I'd like to make that a motion.
I'd like to accept that if that's a motion.
So, you want to table this right now?
Yes.
Motion and second on the floor to table this until the July meeting, is that correct?
Correct.
Further study. Is any further discussion?
I'd like to know in July what we need, what steps we need to take to get our planning and zoning ordinances reworked to where you don't have to go to all these different places, which is user-friendly and to be able to be electronically, um. Access.
Do you know what that takes? To do that, I think the board would need to set up a meeting, a meeting, you know, to go over some of the things they would want to see, uh, creating put within our, um, ordinance and stuff. And then, once the board come up with some ideas and decisions, then we can sit down and make a big full public hearing.
I think what Jill has done though, in the planning, um, I think what they have done is found some problem areas and they're trying to address those upfront with the knowledge that if we do it a little bit at a time, probably going to be more cost-effective than having her sit down and retype the whole book of ordinancees because I think it's that wrong. Well, I think your zoning ordinance is a size of a box. This zoning ordinance was originally written, I believe it was two thousand and three. And there were some amendments done in two thousand and ten that included the downtown overlay. And there really has been no visit to those until I started working and all the problems that were running again. And I think that what David and what Adam is pointing out here is the fact that about every other month or so, I'm bringing in new amendments. And we do spend, the planning board spends a great deal of time and, and I really appreciate all that the planning board has done to work on these different elements. But I think that there are times when there is a little bit of disconnect on getting direction from this board what you want from the planning board and, um, and actually sitting down and having working sessions with you involved. I do think that if you, if you do look at rewriting the zoning ordinance, it gives us an opportunity to establish a schedule that can be advertised and it can allow the board to become more involved in the process. So, we establish a time frame, like we're going to work on this chapter this month, this chapter this month. Because what I'm concerned is, is that something's going to get changed and you might miss what that is if you just do the whole thing all at one time. Well, zoning is, is a lot more complex than, and, and what I was just explaining where when it came to residential parking, you have to go to this area and then you have to go to another section. And you have to, you have to, you have to jump from one place to the other when it comes to just one single use. And it can be very confusing to people. It can be, however, for you to only do one article, that article affects the other article so much that if you make changes here and you don't make changes back here in these other articles, then it doesn't connect well.
They sort of kind of deep one another in some, in some area.
I'd like to go with the municipal Smith's. Proposal that we redo the whole book like, like at one time, if you could get price or, or what needs to be done. I know we already have one price and that was more than we wanted to do. Spend that time and we're getting ready to go into the new budget, I, I, I know budget here and this is the time that we need to get this done.
Yeah, great.
And I also.
There's a, there's a motion, second on, on the floor already, so we don't need to change, we don't need to change anything. He's already made a motion that we need to redo.
He made a motion, we bring it back in July, you know, we'll have time for him in July to do what he needs to do. So, I would probably be good if you retract your motion and just come outside, we need to update our.
I'll try, I'll try my second.
Okay, well, I'll make a motion and then we redo my first. I retract my first motion.
Yeah, I, I'll track that.
Moving to second, then we retract the reason of motion, any discussion? Not all in favor of the motion, raise your hand, all opposed likewise. Now, you might want us.
Do the motion.
I like, I like to make a motion that we redo our planning.
I second.
Whatever time it takes.
Yes.
Moving to second, then we redo our planning zone. Any discussion?
Do we need to get a, a contract estimate from you? What, what I will do is I will try to work up a schedule for you, for you to understand the different levels and what we're going to have to go through in order to revise this ordinance and then we'll discuss it further at that time. We're, we're going to need to add the cost to our budget. Add it to, to cover that. And then all of that.
Yeah. And how much work she does, good job, now the job she has to do.
I think I've been very fair with this board. I mean, I, I, I don't think. I just want to make sure we have our plan.
Yeah. Now, what, what we're, what we're looking at the line of nothing that is detrimental if we don't make them, make them live on it, I feel we do the whole thing great.
That's right, I mean, it's, it's the way things are and happen, so, always here, so.
Any further discussion on the motion? If not, I'll favor the redo and spend it on the book. Any other assessment, raise your hand, all opposed likewise.
Give us a call first. Call's best.
Okay.
Um, that, it was, um, the. Behind your second tab there is your coenforcement report. I will let you know that there is one case that is still pending extension until June fifteenth. And that's the case up here on Main Street. It does not come up until fifteen. We also, they have abated, he's abated seven cases this month. The report shows he's abated seven cases. And there are twelve new NOVs, notice of violations that were sent out this month. And there are currently three cases that we are, that legal, that your attorney is working on and I'm working with him to see that we get these addressed. And those are, of course, the family dollar building situation. The King Road, uh, there was a high grass situation there. I know that the, uh, that Bob Woodhoyle has called the property owners of today and they have, because there was a disconnect when who owns the property and who, if they live so far away, they're not here anymore. They thought they had already told you, and their corporation did not make it there. And so, but they assured him that that would be, so, that would be taken care of. He has sent out another notice to yet another corporation that we believe is owned, owns the property on Main Mary Street.
This one from there is all. Oh, right.
So, we, um, and there is also the situation that was on, that is on Colridge Road that the, um, the coenforcement officer advised you to have the city abate the problem. Because there were, it was concerning junk, what he referred to as junk, the attorney advised you not to get involved with that, to let him handle that situation because what he calls junk may not be junk that's on the mail. And so.
Did we know what we had on the process for that because I noticed the grass.
What happened with that is this past, this month, the coenforcement officer was going to go out, take pictures and give me a summary of exactly what needed to be removed in order to bring the property into compliance. He went back out there last week, I believe it was the twenty-fourth. He went back out there to do that so that the attorney would know how to handle the situation and said that the grass was so high, he couldn't see the grass, he wasn't there. So, he has cited them for, for the high grass and it is in that property. He, he did cite them again, I believe he gave them ten days to bring the property into compliance. At, at the end of that ten days, if the grass is not removed, then they're going to be cited with a citation. And if the grass is moved and the remainder of the problems are continuing out there, at that time, the attorney will send a letter out giving him, giving the property owner exactly what he's taking care of and will move forward. He did, great. I should be hearing from the coenforcement officer because he will return tomorrow. So, he will return tomorrow and I'm sure he'll let us know at that time, so.
Do we have any objects on the family dollar building?
Yeah, I thought it was pretty raw, it's a real proof involved in it. And they, they produced the pricing in. They're, I just say they're in discussion with the, uh, current family dollar, who's in there. I think there's a new issue of amount of rent and, uh, there's a, with the merger, and he was one ball out, power tree, power tree, power tree.
Ball out and without.
They, uh, were addressing whether they wanted freestanding areas or not. But, um, as I explained to him, the new bypass around Ashboro from Lexington to Tyler City, the only place that somebody was going out for, won't stop to grab something to eat and get from the heat. That's why you had a new, uh, couple of new convenience stores being purchased. You've got O'Reilly's, you've got those jaggs coming in, well, they're going to see a traffic pattern shift. That's, that I don't be going down through Ashboro now. You're going to see traffic coming from Lexington, looping around, on O'Reilly, they'll shift all south. And this is where they'll end up, like what we missed. They come in here, guess what? You're going to have your gas station, your food, your whatever, where they can stop. So, uh, they're trying to make that sell for, and I explained to him that he needs to do a couple of things. Needs to apply for new permits. And getting new permits, they go in there, put windows and doors on them, keep the ground mowed and then hopefully they'll, um, finish up their negotiations with the new group. If they can put some windows and doors in there and mow the ground, they'll look ten times better than they have looks now. And they're making more stuff. They've reduced the pricing. After one of them in the traffic, they'll be finished here next year. They'll have that bypass to get some tennis, you're going to see a traffic shift.
And I.
It's going to be possible.
And Bob, and Bob worked really hard trying to get the property owners to move with this. And I'll say that we have talked, we've also been in talks with the school government in Chapel Hill and been advised on, from them concerning the new, um, general statutes that were passed last year that put a time limit on when how long governments can allow a violation to continue and still have the authority to be able to clean a violation up. Um, and we're running, we were running that, we're running into that window. So, it's in their best interest to go ahead and get the permits because the next thing we're going to have to do will do a lot.
Start site, I don't know if they're going to start site and there'll be time for that. That's where they, uh, he promised, uh, I don't know what their field message, I know he's just a real, but I think he needs social emergency on their part. And if we don't hear anything about that, you know.
Jill, can you go through this memorandum on this permit? We take it back to the board. Okay, that's, that's what, that's the last thing I'll need to mention is you, I believe, I've spoken with, I've, uh, spoken with Detra herself. She is the director over the, um, rural economic development and this funding of the CDBG grants. And it's been some time since the federal government and the state released some CDBG grants that I'm aware of, which is community development block grant is what that is. And it's funding that allows communities to do things like provide services for low, the low to moderate income levels. That's the, that's the group of people that they're trying to, um, serve by issuing CDBG grants. So, this is the first funding that I've seen in a few years. Um, and I know that I've talked with other communities that say that they, they have a, they've come out and have been looking for them for some time. But there are different projects that, it, this is a very involved process. This is the application to get some grants. But the grants would be, can be issued up to as much as seven hundred fifty thousand dollars to a single community. And there are, they are going, the state is going to release ten thou, ten million dollars worth of funds in these. This application process is very involved and, um, sent this to the town a couple of months ago. And I sent that because I want you to really be thinking about this. And why I put this in your packet tonight was because the deadline's coming upon us, fastly coming upon us. We do, it, the deadline is July the fifteenth to turn in the, an application. Is it the sixteenth?
Sixteenth.
I'm sorry. Okay, the sixteenth. And, and we won't, we don't want to get left behind if we have projects that we want to do. And she spoke to me for a while all the time and she's very nice and she said that there were projects that our community would like to consider, that we could certainly call her and run it by her. And she would talk to us about whether or not she felt like that they could file one for that. But I believe things like the Bean Center, Bean Center kind of thing. There are also water to sewer. They don't do the purchase, they will only update, is that correct? That's correct. There, it, it would be, they, they don't, well, it's, it's re, it's revitalization, it is not. It is not, and that's why we use the term up it, because it's not new construction normally. Now, there, it's not that you can't do any new construction within it, but it's almost nothing, and it would have to be a very bad situation. But they have their objectives, they have three. The CDBG program objectives, national objectives are, one, benefiting low and moderate income persons; two, preventing or eliminating slums or blight; and three, meeting other community development needs that are deemed to be urgent because of existing conditions posed, because of existing conditions pose a serious and immediate threat to the health and welfare of the community, and other financial resources are not available to meet the need. So, it, but it will work on utility and upgrading, things like that. And so, I have not worked with putting together an application for a CDB grant. But this is something that I think that we do need to discuss and we need to talk about.
I think it would be good if we could get a task force together, um, to work on this grant. I know the museum might qualify. And looking at it, from what I understand, is you can put in different, different requests. That doesn't mean that put them all in. I'd like to see us do something with our concession scene, maybe change that into a, a community center. Work on the museum, and I probably might be able to do something with our sewer system. Well, I'd like to get that community center too.
The only problem I have with this application is, and I'm gonna be with the devil right now.
Yes, sir.
This thing was sent out April sixteenth.
Mm-hmm.
Here we are, June third. And just now being presented to the board. I had it cut.
No, I sent it out, May eleventh seventeen.
Well, I haven't been on discuss. I haven't heard any more from them. But I had to talk about that case myself. We need, we need to move along.
Yes, sir. That's why I brought it to your attention.
Seven hundred fifty thousand dollars I tried to ransom possibly to get, you need to go out.
Yes, sir.
And who's gonna do that?
Well, the town passed it, and, and that, that is a very good point.
Yes, sir, yes.
But this is not a, it's a CDBG grant, is not a matching funds kind of grant, which is normally what you see. So, it would be up to ransomware to be willing to staff whoever the person is that we have to monitor such a process. Because the federal government or, and the state government is not gonna hand a, a, it's about municipality or a local government, county government, seven hundred fifty thousand dollars and not expect every single, he could be crossing, I'd be gone.
Those grants are a lot harder to get because when they tried to do the last forty-nine water project,
We never said that.
The requirements is a lot different. Uh, when I had my meeting, it was girl Randy touched on that, that Saturday, uh, about the grant stuff and the CDB. It is, it's a lot harder, uh, the qualification to get the money.
So, are you saying you're in more progress?
No, I'm not saying that. I'm just making the board aware. Uh, because he threw out some other meetings that was available and things to, uh, the company that he's with and through, uh, USBA about a lot of grants and stuff out there that would, say, for instance, a homeowner had a well that went mad or such a thing, but they can't afford to fix it. They will come in and fix it and spread it out over twenty years in the interest of only this one percent.
Let me ask you a question. Dave, Mr. Wilson, says this is what we're looking for in that, in that one project.
Yes.
Would we be able to do this application?
Oh, I'm sure we would.
Could be a good resource.
Once the application is completed, however, we may only have to commit to having somebody oversee it.
Right.
But what I was, what I have said in private, what, what I've said and listened in, in your public hearings is several problems. The realtor has a problem with your fire hydrant, um, with that. And, and I don't know whether that would be considered, but would it be wonderful if you could apply for a grant that could actually repair them all at one point? And, um, because the, this is funding that we need to consider here. And I don't know that it'd be covered, but I think that somebody needs to, we need to have a sit down and let someone talk to her. And wouldn't it, or, or the situation I've heard that you speak of in, in past public meetings, Mr. Chief, is the, the water lines and sewer lines along, is it river?
Yes.
Is that correct? And, and I'm sure when you ride through there, that has river there, is what you mean? You load a moderate income. So, I don't, I don't know that that's not, and you've done some research on it and saying that explains how much all that can cost and those sorts of things. The big thing about CDBG grants, though, is, is once they grant you that money, you have a time period, and I believe this one is thirty months. And you've gotta have those, those projects completed in that thirty month bucket. It is, but it's something that, that I think the board needs to consider and, and talk about, and not let the money go by for some way that we can draft all that.
Randy Wilson would be a good advisor to this board for it, that, uh, CDB grant. Because he's very knowledgeable about it.
Let me, um, if we have a task portion, even more or less on this, is that something that's gonna have to be advertised every time we wanna get this?
It's public, yeah.
So, can we go ahead and just set it, let's have a meeting every, so we can get it done? Because I really think that we need to go, is the clerk required to be at this moment?
Yeah.
So, we probably need to do it maybe eight o'clock in the morning? So, there, so we're not pulling, driving the office?
We're in.
Really, man.
The clerk has to be there if the full board is there. If the full board is not there, but it's still considered a public meeting, someone needs to take note. Someone needs to take note of that.
I, I think what needs to happen is that Bobby come up with a schedule and send it out to the commissioners and see what works with everybody. So, the six, from the time period right now, we need to make sure that it's all, all fits within everybody's schedule.
We're looking at six weeks.
I know. You gotta bring the, the six, bring the, the, the thing?
I think it's gonna take more than just one meeting.
That, that we need to set the-
Do you wanna have one this Friday morning?
At eight o'clock? And kind of figure out something, and then go from there. I think that would be, yeah.
What's fine.
I mean, if we're not gonna be making any decisions other than setting meetings, it's not like we're gonna do a motion or anything.
Can we invite to get Randy and Mr. Wilson, if you want, try and call him, let him be with.
I also think that you need to set it up in a place where that you can make a phone call through this, this division, and you, you could come up with some, not anything written in stone, what your projects are, but that you can run by and you probably feel a little more comfortable about spending a lot of man-hours in trying to develop a program and everything. She, she could tell you whether or not, for sure.
We could need to come up with a priority list around the apartment?
The model is going live and looking what's up here, and it was that one. We just don't make the, uh, uh, go a lot. Okay, so we'll have a meeting Friday at eight o'clock in the morning? Do we have a motion that affects?
I saw my, second?
In the second, we have a meeting Friday morning at eight AM. We have a discussion. It's a special meeting for purpose of, uh-
CDBG grant.
CDBG, I put that in. Any further discussions, not off that motion, raise your hand, or those like that. Plans is open to board members, Bobby have it?
Um, on June thirtieth. Um, you will have two members of the planning and building board, um, their terms will end. Um, Elton Smith and the alternate, which is filled by Daisy Parrish. Those two, those two spots will open up on June thirtieth. I suggest, I have applications here, and we'll put them out in the town hall. And applications will be presented to the board in the lobby area.
And he's owning this media on the sixteenth, right? Make some recommendations.
They don't make recommendations. They all, they'll make the recommendations in the- So, I have applications here, anybody in the room wants one tonight, and I will have them out at the counter in the office. A couple of people to pick up. And I will get you those applications as they come in. And I'll put copies to present, and we'll come back in July.
That's evident, Casey. Uh, pre-haircut day, Bobby have it?
Josh has, um, put in his request to close the street for there that day. Um, it was discussed last year that we make this an annual event, but it was actually not in the motion when I went back to the board. So, they're wanting to make this an annual event. I just need a motion to that effect, so that we can just do their paperwork and not have, they don't have to come before y'all every year.
I tell me that we make this a motion, an annual, a motion.
So, I can say. In the second, we make the pre-haircut day an annual event, any discussion? What? Saturday?
It's August twenty-fourth.
They want to go with the fourth Saturday ever, ever?
They're all with the Saturday before.
It's, it's right before four, yeah.
Do it annually the Saturday before? Two or so, yeah. Okay. Any further discussion? If not, I'm sorry, the most, raise your hand, or those like that, nothing carried. September regular war meeting, Bobby have it?
Um, the board meeting in September is later date. We can decide on the dates.
What's the board's report?
What's that following?
No.
No, I saw a little bit.
The night is coming.
Move it to the night.
Have a motion set on four to move our September meeting to September the night. Is there any discussion?
Is he turning that?
Yes, he's about to. If no discussion, I'll trade a motion, raise your hand, or those like that. Rail trail. Mayor Shaw. As you know, we've been, uh, trying to spend some money on the rail trail. I didn't know about that. I attended the River Canyon in Frankville the past Saturday, phase two of their rail trail. And I was handed a letter from North Carolina Department of National Cultural Resources, the office secretary of the governor, Lord Cooper's office, and it said, Dear Mayor Shaw, It's my honor to designate your local sixty-five mile, answer a deep rail trail as a saving North Carolina deep river state trail. As the Department of National Cultural Resources, Division of Park and Recreation, State Trail Program, and North Carolina Trails Committee, share a vision of a system of well-planned, managed trails throughout the state for all trails included. This system is completely dependent on the efforts of partners who are willing to commit time and resources to make trails, blueways, and greenways for the local community as well as segments of the great state trail. We truly appreciate your effort in creating and maintaining the Ramso Deep River Rail Trail and part of the Deep River State Trail. It will become a destination for hikers, bikers, and pedestrians throughout North Carolina. Currently, the Deep River State Trail is our only state trail that includes both trail and both blueways. I look forward to continued support with you to develop additional segments of its unique resource. If you do assist us, the finest comeback, so, uh, again, thank you for supporting developing the Deep River State Trail. It's a pleasure to talk with you, and look forward to continued cooperation. And that's, I think it's sushi, town, town secretary, it's Lord Cooper. And I read that, just for this, uh, thing, we need, we have a piece of property down here that we're trying to negotiate with North Carolina Railway on that position, that property. And, uh, they're willing to sell it to them, but they haven't come out with any figure of it. But I would like to ask this board for approval to do an appraisal on this property. Uh, I already have a, a quote, Julian West, for three hundred dollars to do an appraisal on the property, and see what they appraise it at, and then you can make a offer to the local government and see if they'll accept our offer. We need that piece of property. We've got sixteen thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars. Didn't remember, waiting on us to get that property.
I tell me that we, uh, uh, do an appraisal for three hundred dollars on this property to make the offer towards, uh, purchase.
That's right. In the second, any discussion?
Where are we gonna get the funds from to purchase it?
Uh, I can get them out.
I thought we were gonna use power lines for- You guys change your mind or how?
No.
I mean, if the budget means that you think you'd like to use power lines, we don't know.
No, uh, what I said, if I could not, I doubt it's a piece of equipment we was talking about.
Right.
If that couldn't come out of power plant, I was gonna change something else that the budget could cover.
Does, does the equipment come out of power plant, and is there money left over?
We have money left over, but the equipment, I'm not sure we get, I'm still waiting on a power power plant.
Any other discussion? If not, I'll in favor of motion, raise your hand, or those like that. Well, yours is a yes, that's a good decision.
I understand.
So, that was all. Okay, all right. Dale Main Street. Last year, the town, in, in particular, we're making a grant queue. Looked at it, Dale Main Street, and it was an assistant. All the calls came into the office for booths to set up. We got with the band, scheduled a band. I just like to know what's, uh, what's going on right now, because we haven't heard anything. We're getting calls in the office here about booths at the, at Dale Main Street. And we had the band that we had last year, uh, I think Mr. Chief, Mr. Chief spoke to those people about coming back this year, and they were ready to come back and play, be here all day for-
Four hundred dollars.
Four hundred dollars. I understand you sent a contract, you don't know.
Um, see, last year, we paid them, uh, I think it was eleven hundred. They had another band, fifteen hundred, and another band, another price. Well, that band, that band was very popular, a lot of citizens, a lot of vendors asked if we could have them back. And they had gotten like four or five bookings that day while they were here. So, at that point, I asked them, were they be interested in coming back and playing all day? And they give us a price. And they agreed to it. I came back, I totally bought it at that time, and then I haven't heard anything else. So, about three weeks ago, uh, Carolina Soul Man called me and said they had sent a contract to one of your advisory committees, and they hadn't heard a thing.
Um, last year, was before the advisory committee had a lead person for the Fall Festival. And since then, you requested that Mr. Parrish do that. Um, I talked with you about sending that contract, and Mr. Parrish, my understanding, has not received anything from Carolina Soul Band, but has discussed with them, and they agreed to play half the day, um, at the Fall Festival. Um, we have not received an email from him, if we had, Mr. Parrish reported it to me. But I believe you will go ahead and follow up on that with them. And since then, we have had two committee meetings, neither which you have attended.
You supposed to bring direct, that you supposed to bring the advisory committee recommendations to this board. You put me three times, you're gonna bring us recommendations, recommendations to the board for the decision-making, you haven't done that.
We, um, I did bring the information from last advisory meeting, too, one. We haven't finished up on Fall Festival yet, and we've had two committee meetings since then. And those were committee meetings, not advisory council meetings.
And you think your advisory committee, uh-
The next one is in July?
No, the one you probably met.
May.
Okay, we haven't heard anything. We don't know anything, and we, uh, we are getting calls in the office.
Well, and, and that's fine, but I talked with Bobby the other day about the application being online. Um, you were gonna check that date for me. Application's out there, and you're not forwarding me any calls. You're not forwarding me any, any of that.
I don't know what, no, they're not sending me, you know? They call and ask, I tell them they have to call you. But you're supposed to keep the board and advise them what's going on through your advisory committee, the recommendation of, so we know what the fellow public, that's all I'm asking.
Well, I mean, if we're contacting people for the bands, and we've got the application up online, if there's another specific question that you have, why aren't you asking them?
I said, I do not know what the fellow people, when they're calling me.
What's their question?
It, it's, it's random. If, if you keep us being- If, if you keep us in, informed of what's going on, then we can tell them. Look, I, I tell them to call you, that they have called back and stuff, said, uh, I think one said they, the other one said they left a message and stuff. But I don't know what to tell them. Prior to that, the last three years, prior to that, me and Bobby has handled the Fall Festival, but we knew what was going on, we knew what to tell them and stuff. Right now, we don't have a clue.
We, we have been working on it, and I'm, I'm concerned that I'm not getting any information prior to now, in a public meeting, I've not heard one phone call.
Vicky, I asked you about this much ago, Dr. Damon, in twenty days ago, I asked you.
And we talked to the band. We took it, did you not talk to the band, Mr. Parrish?
But I'm saying, do not bring them to the board.
So, the band is not an issue. Well, we get it straight, and we get to the board.
I think, I think a lot of questions that's asking people that were here last few years, had searched block on Main Street, are they gonna be able to have those things locked again? And the answer that we've all given is yes.
Well, I mean, I don't see why there would be a problem with that unless there's a problem. I mean, nobody's asking that.
Does your advisory committee have the blocks that you used last year?
The advisory committee does not handle the Fall Festival, the Fall Festival Committee handles it. There's a lead person that goes to the advisory committee every three months. And like I said, we had two Fall Festival committee meetings in the last two months. Our next step is to go ahead and mail out the applications, but we wanted to make sure the applications were correct prior to mailing them out. I'm not understanding if there's been all these questions, why are you waiting for now to ask?
No, there's been a couple of questions. Because I have asked you months, months, and you told me that's your department.
You haven't asked me anything in the last several months.
Yes, I have, but I asked you about the band, and you told me I didn't have a right to tell them that, remember that?
I told you, you had no right to implement a contract without me.
No, Vicky, at that point, I did.
No, it isn't.
At that point, at that point, I did.
Let's do this, let's, uh, but all I'm asking is, the board is supposed to know what's going on, we have no clue what to tell them.
That's all I'm asking.
If there's a specific question that you are, are not able to answer, please reach out to myself or J.C., and we will find that answer for you.
In other words, you, she don't want the board to know.
That's not what I said.
I'm not going, I'm just.
And please don't put words in my mouth.
I, I'm trying to get a clear understanding.
Okay, let's, uh, let's do this, let's.
Write the question down, section up.
Not right now. I'm just concerned, you know, we need to make sure we got a, that's the, the Dale Main Street, because it's, it's, it's an annual event, and it's growing bigger and bigger. We don't know if that was, I guess the best I do is refer the comment to you or to J.C.
Or to call me and ask me, I, there has not been one time that anybody on this board has made a phone call, a text, or an email to me that I have not responded properly.
Yeah, we'll do this. Since I brought this to the table. Any calls coming in the office, we'll refer them to Mr. Parrish.
And that's what I've been doing.
And she can, go and ask her what's going on, and inform Gordon what's, what's happening.
I was just asking, I was just asking for the board's purpose, by to find out what's going on, because it's supposed to be brought for the board.
Okay, we'll do that. Any calls coming in will be referred to you, and you can elect her.
Or emails forward if you want.
Yeah. Uh, water sewer treaty finished, Mr. Chief.
Okay, um, as you know, on May the twenty-fifth, uh, that was a Saturday, we held a meeting for the forty-nine project. We had a great turnout, uh, and things are looking good, we're moving ahead with, uh, income survey. And we'll be holding more meetings with, uh, in the neighborhood. Uh, far as, um, streets goes, uh, paving will start next week, um, some areas that have already been approved. Um, as far as any other expenses, I don't have anything for water and sewer right now.
Thank you. Dematerial library, Commissioner Smith.
Little cemetery main entrance, as you may have noticed, we're putting a fence up on, like, on the left side to divide the residential property and some there. Um, they should be, um, finished with that sometime this week, um, and as far as the library goes on, if they're, if they're able to discover.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Uh, park recreation, Mr. Cullen.
Um, we were very fortunate to have Junior Simmons from Eastern Randolph come to the park and do a cleanup. He was a volunteer, effort by about sixteen teenagers, and they did a very good job. Um, if you notice, we have some new signs up for the lake, Mr. Gray did those, and they don't, I think they look very, very nice. We are hosting the eight U ball tournament right now. The six U team is done, and they were invited to run out for the first game of the season for the Old North State League, which I believe they probably had a really, really good time doing on Saturday night. Um, Don would have been here giving more of an update on how the season went, but he's at the concessions right now with the eight U tournament. Last day for the eight U tournament that I am aware of, the championship is tomorrow. So, if anybody wants to come out and cheer for, uh, ransom kids, that would be great, you know they're not playing. Um, the Barry T. Richardson Tournament, we're looking at August seventeenth. Um, that's a week before the, um, pre haircut day.
Is that what we have now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, uh, we have a closed session, discuss personnel on our agenda. I'll entertain a motion if we're doing a closed session, closed session.
I saw a move.
In a second?
Thanks.
Any discussion? Uh, I would like to invite our attorney, our clerk, Miss Hatley, our chief of police, Laura Allen, to go into the executive session. All the fair motion ready again?
Oh, both sides.
We'll be meeting in the office. Okay, this time I'll entertain a motion, we'll go back to the open session.
I saw a move.
Open session.
Second. Any discussion? Call it off, that motion ready again?
On both sides.
This item on the agenda is a mere commission comment, any commission got any comments to make at this time?
I will say, I, I didn't touch on it when, uh, we was talking about water. But if you know, know a family in needs, in need of water, sewer, and different things, there is, uh, money out there and help. Uh, just let me know, and I can put you in touch with the people that can help them and stuff, and I'll be glad to fill in the commissioners' and emails.
Any other commission comments? I don't have anything to bring up tonight, but I know I'm so. Reminders and announcements, the planning and zoning board meeting will be June the seventeenth at six PM, that's the same night we have in public hearing. I'm sure June the eighth, burnt biscuits, six to eight PM, what's that gonna be here for?
The lake.
The lake.
And it is dropping roll.
EDC and budget adoption hearing, June the seventeenth to seven thirty. Any other announcements?
Sure, no action taken in close session.
Okay. Uh, there were no actions taken in close session. I'll entertain a motion with Jerry Teeger.
I saw a move, in a second.
I'll say raise your hand, we'll close like that. Thank you.